You got it.
Yeah, yeah.
PR person to the client. So I think she has her self experience. I think she's like a go-to guy on the client at the job site. And so anyway. Yeah, it'd be interesting. The thing about a client staff is that they're going to be in my district. They're going to be in my opening. How the commissions go. I don't know. Well, when he first offered. Did you ever look at your pageant book?
No, not really. So I said, well, read off of the grosses and stuff.
Yeah, that's fine.
When you hate porn, I have to go through that. But most sex is kind of fun that I have to.
Right. And the company is not really. So we're just friends. It's a lot. I don't know. I think the low-end hotels. What punctuation do you get from them? You did it. Plus the Peds. Vegas, but each one.
That's the time to do it, right?
Yeah. It's okay.
Okay, Council, 5 o'clock. Let's call our study session to order. Thank you all for being here. I think what we'll do first is do the Keep Cape Beautiful. Robbie, if you'll join me. Michelle Jones and Alex Reed join us up here on the corner. First Missouri State Bank.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty good.
So we don't have the beautiful picture yet, but it is coming. And we will get that on this plaque. So this is just kind of a pseudo dummy to award tonight. Again, want to recognize our Keep Cape Beautiful business of the month, and it's First Missouri State Bank. Obviously, a very visible corner. A month or so, a month or two ago, we awarded the Chateau Gerardo and their neighbor across the street. With the city plan and Mount Auburn being so invisible, they set a great standard in taking care of and beautifying their property. So we say congratulations to First Missouri State Bank for the good work. Keep it up. And as I always say, this keeps momentum going as we continue month by month and year by year to beautify our city. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Got a photo op here.
Thank you. One more, sorry.
And picture to come.
All right. So just give us a little message.
Yep.
Thank you, Robbie, for being a part of this committee. It means a lot to our city and to our citizens to beautify our community. And where better to start with our businesses and our commercial enterprises? Okay, Lori Meyer, Employee Health and Dental Renewal. I see you brought a partner.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lori Meyer, Human Resources and Risk Manager for the city. It is that time of year when we are looking at our annual employee health and dental, medical and dental benefits. And with me this evening is my guest, our guest, David Johnson with Seabed Benefits and Insurance Services. Dave has been our broker and consultant with the city for about 12 years now. I certainly can attest to the nine, almost nine years that I've been here and worked with him. But it's been a very positive and successful relationship. And he keeps us up to date about what's going on with the healthcare world, certainly keeps our office, helps keep us compliant with all the items that go on with that as well. And we appreciate that he's there this evening to help present our plan for next year and certainly answer any questions that you might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Dave, once again, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Well, this year is another successful year. The plans are going to renew in terms of benefits. The recommendation is to renew the plans the same as is, not change any kind of co-pays or networks or anything like that. Specifically, the dental plan, everything will continue the same. It's a self-funded dental plan, so the administrators, Delta Dental of Missouri, they provide you a network of providers to utilize. As long as the employees utilize that network of providers, their benefits are higher than they would be if they went to a non-network provider. And all those claims are submitted to Delta. They charge you an administrative fee every month per employee. And for that, they process claims, provide booklets, provide the network and so forth. All of those, that administrative fee is going to stay the same this year. That's been in place now for a couple of years. So the claims have run very steady for the last 12 months. What we do every year is do an analysis. We did that a couple of months ago, just to see if, how the claims are running. If they're running a little high, we make a recommendation to increase a little bit. If they're running the same or a little bit lower, we just recommend that you leave the plan the same. The beauty of a self-funded plan, especially in the case of dental, because there's an individual maximum for every participant on the plan. As long as you're funding that to the levels that the actuaries say you should be, it runs very well. And you keep any of the surplus that's left over at the end of the year. So that plan is running very well, and we'd recommend that you just leave the rates the same on that one. On the medical plan, last year, we reviewed the market and took a look at some other options. And Anthem continued at that time to be the best offering based on the plan of benefits they provide, based on the pricing of their administration, their stop-loss, their network access fees and so forth. They have performed very well this year. In fact, claims have gone down pretty dramatically. Again, with a self-funded plan, you keep any of the difference or any, you fund at a certain level. If you, if the claims are lower than that expected level, which they have been this year, then you keep that difference and it stays in your funds for future use. There is a, there's an individual stop-loss point on the plan. We actually did, it was a contractual issue last year, not issue, but, but change. We changed from really a minimum premium plan to a true self-funded plan. The main difference was the obligation to the city actually went up, but the fixed expenses went down a little bit. So between the two, your rates stayed about the same, and they're going to stay just about the same this year. The stop-loss goes up every year. That's an individual stop-loss point. And every insurance company raises that point every year, but your overall claim maximum is actually going to drop a little bit. So between the two, the pricing stays just nearly the same. It's less than a half a percent increase. We have worked with staff, and they're going to increase rates just a little bit, both individual employee rates as well as family rates, but just really minor, less than a few dollars per employee. So the plan is running very, very well right now. And we're very pleased that, that it's been so successful for the last couple of years. That's really the story, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Significant to me that with healthcare and the increases that you see around, that we were able to be at the dollars and percentages that we were outstanding.
Yeah, the annual trend right now that our actuaries use, in other words, what they expect claims to go up every year is between 9 and 10%. That's actually that with most insurance companies. So had you had all the same claims this year, you would have expected to pay 9% more than you would have last year, and you actually paid less than last year. So you did have some large claims last year, and that's, that works into that. But the plans performed very well, and we expect it to continue to for the next year.
Very good. Council, is there any consent agenda this evening for approval by consent? Are there comments, questions from Council?
I was pleasantly surprised that there was a minimal increase. Claims were almost $1.2 million down, so that's, that's good news in this environment.
Yep, very good. Okay, Dave, thank you.
Thank you.
For your dedicated workforce.
Nice to see you all.
Yep. Okay, Alex, downtown strategic plan. You're up.
Thank you.
And welcome to your visiting team here.
Well, we're excited. We're excited to be able to present this plan to you and hopefully consider for adoption in the near future. About 12 months in the making with this plan, there's been a lot of input that we've received. Our last plan was adopted back in 2009. It was part of a dream initiative, which is downtown revitalization and economic assistance for Missourians designated by the governor at the time. And a lot's come to fruition since we adopted that plan. We've established TIP districts. We've created the CID. We've created wayfinding signs and signage. We've attracted a hotel downtown. So there's a lot in that document that we've seen have come to fruition. So now is a good time to repolish the document, update it, get some new visions for even yet more further in the future for downtown. So our updated plan includes analysis of our existing conditions. It includes engagement with community members. We held two public meetings. One was last November, the other was last February. We also held a separate meeting with key stakeholders downtown and really solicited feedback from everybody there. This document is reflective of what we heard in a lot of those meetings. It includes the planning of eight key focus areas. It includes 10 initiative projects. It has an implementation schedule, which we identify organizations responsible for certain elements of the plan. And my presentation actually just focuses on our eight key focus areas. I wanted to just provide a quick snapshot highlight of some of the recommendations in the document. But as I'm going through these focus areas, and that this is, and it's not an exact blueprint of what we foresee downtown. It's very conceptual. A great example of that is our previous plan, our previous document called for a hotel downtown, but it called for it where Burrito Ville is. And we didn't say no to a new hotel because they didn't put it on top of Burrito Ville. We knew that was conceptual and could foresee it somewhere in the downtown. So just keep that in mind as I go over these focus areas. So here's the focus areas within the footprint of downtown. You can see it actually takes up a good part of the downtown. So focus area one, that's the Good Hope Harig District. My numbers to the left actually coordinate with the numbers on the map, if you're wondering what location I'm talking about as I go through these. Create a mixed-use development for a neighborhood hub on the south side of Good Hope Street. And if Council will remember, if you can see on the map, if Council will remember, we actually do have a development agreement right now for 635 and 631 Good Hope. So we're already seeing some progress on that recommendation. Redevelop parcels on the north side of Morgan Oak Street into workforce housing. That's where you can see that alleyway. They have a lot of green space and open space for residents. Foster multifamily housing on the southwest corner of Frederick Street and William Street. And streetscape improvements throughout the area. And this was a precedent image that the consultant had done. That's 635 Good Hope, and to the left of it, 631 Good Hope. And that's actually a line development that we had the development agreement. That's kind of what they envisioned when they issued their proposal. So very exciting project. So focus area two, that's our Fountain Street corridor. Redevelop the lumberyard into a regional retail and commercial center. That's just north there on Spanish Street. Build high-end, attached, single-family homes. There's a lot of vacant lots. You can see where they have designated Area Two. Redevelop property on the west side of South Middle Street from Morgan Oak Street to Jefferson Street. And I'll give you, it's kind of off the map there. I'll give you a better look at it in a second. And provide streetscape enhancements. And so this is the area, it's the, the building right there, Middle Street, just to the other side of Fountain, where it intersects with Jefferson. That building there is the Cobble and Field Building. The property just above it is a vacant building, so they're proposing to redevelop that area. Focus area three is our Common Please Court. They call for a developed design for parking on the west side of North Spanish Street. So what they show there is 90-degree angle parking on the north side of Spanish Street. They thought we could fit about 48 parking stalls in that location with that design. Develop linear garden along the north edge of Spanish Street, where we've created that parking. Implement the Cape Gerardo Walk of Fame, so dedicating sidewalk tiles to famous local people and their accomplishments. Improve existing parking, or improve the existing parking lot on North Lorimer Street. That's number four there, just to the south of Courthouse. And then reinforce the terrace slope with landscaping. And I can provide you some image. Here's a picture of it as it exists today. And then here's a precedent image that our consultant had rendered. You can see the 90-degree parking stalls, the landscaping. And so focus area four, that's our Courthouse Village, right around our new federal building. Rehabilitate buildings at the southwest corner of Independence and South Frederick Street. That right now, number one, is a residential property, just on the other side of Frederick Street by the federal building. Assemble and redevelop parcels on the west side of South Frederick Street between Independence and Meriwether. So on Frederick Street, on that block right there, there's only three buildings, one of them being the one that we had just discussed, and then two other residential properties. So there's some vacant lot there that could be developed. Enhance streetscapes around the Cape River Museum. Install bike and pedestrian facilities at the future extension of South Fountain Street to Independence. So in TTF right now, we're calling for the extension of Fountain Street to connect it from William Street to Independence Street. And they're asking for some bike-ped facilities along that route. Coordinate with future site plan for future senior housing development. On this map, they have it around the City Hall area. And improve sidewalk network throughout the focus area. Focus area five is Broadway and Main Street. They call for an issuance of RFP to determine the feasibility of a mixed-use development at the northwest corner of Broadway and Main Street. That's a city-controlled lot, you can see on the map. Redevelop properties along Broadway and North Spanish Street. Collaborate on a high-end residential development on the north side of Broadway between Spanish and Lorimer. And construct off-street parking, surface parking lot, sorry, the font's just a little small, to accommodate future mixed-use development. Nicolette, you'd even more me to say, make sure your font size is big enough you can read it. It's like, I got it, I got it. All right. Focus area six, North Main Street. Number one, open space overflow parking area. Number two, new park space, also provides overflow parking for major downtown events. Expanded public parking north of the existing parking lot. A riverfront amphitheater. Adult playground, ice skating, rollerblading, ribbon track with climbing walls and zip lines. Number six was picnic pavilions on elevated landforms and streetscape enhancements along North Main Street. So that general area, close to the Hickory Pitts Building. Now, South Main Street, they recommend construction of a park with a splash pad and Cape Gerardo-themed playground. Construct a pavilion at the existing Old Town Cape parking lot. I have a precedent image. I'll show you that in a second. Number three, construct a science center and STEM educational facility. They have it around the general area there between William and Main Street. Enhance the public parking lot of South Main Street and Independence Street. And create wedding gardens, open space along South Main Street. So here is the Old Town Cape lot that they were referring to, and you can see pavilions that would, that would house the farmer's market to be able to put their produce under a shelter. And our last focus area, this is the Marquette Tech District, focus area eight. Build a public parking garage fronting Bellevue Street. Get your bearings there. It's just behind the H&amp;H building there is where they're showing that. Construct a new apartment building on the north side of Bellevue Street between North Middle Street and Fountain Street. Redevelop the property on the east side of North Middle Street between Broadway and Bellevue Street into a mixed-use residential property. Improve public parking signage for a lot at the southwest corner of Broadway and North Middle. And construct a new building on the southwest corner of North Fountain and Bellevue Street. Right now, I think that's the general area where that Cape mark is, back on Fountain. So that's all I have for my presentation. I am going to hand it over to Marla, but I did just want to highlight that partnerships are going to be vital to the success of this plan. I think Marla is going to help echo that. Our downtown development team is here showing their support as well. John with the Cape helped oversee this planning process. Stephen Hoffman with the university and Marla. So with that, I'm going to steal in here.
Yeah, you did steal my thunder. I think that's all.
Easy to get your juices flowing.
Council, Mayor, actually, I'm just here to, as Alex said, kind of reiterate the need for partnerships and to assure the Council that with our past strategic plan, a lot of the tasks that were outlined in that plan were accomplished. And a lot of the goals, as Alex said, some of them were conceptual, but in some way, shape or form have been achieved. And so we, we think this plan is a really good plan. And so I just, we just wanted to, as a team, kind of reiterate that we, we know it's going to take a lot of partners to, to implement what's in this plan, but that we expect from, as Alex said, the downtown development team. Since 2006, since the dream initiative started, we've had a development team together for that whole time, working on downtown development. And that includes the city, us and the chamber. And that team has been working continually since 2006 and intends to stay together and work on implementation of this plan once it's adopted. And so we wanted to assure you of that. And then also the, the idea that we know we need future additional partners to implement much of this, state partners, local partners, everything from the university to the arts, the development community as a whole, and the arts community as a whole, and specifically some organizations that are, you know, part of those, those communities. But we've talked a lot at the development team level and know that it's going to take a lot of partners to do this. The, as Alex noted, the plan does have specific tasks outlined, so to speak, and kind of outlines who should be in charge of those. So we'll make sure as a development team to follow that and make sure that it's implemented all along the way. And after the Council's had time to review the plan and adopt it, this will then be taken to all of the, our board, the chamber board, all of the other organizations interested, and have them, you know, review it, endorse it, so that everybody's on the same page. So that's, that's my guest appearance here. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer anybody on the team.
Do you have hard copies? Do you have copies?
Yeah.
Do that for all the Council, please. I'd like to sit back in my chair and dream on that a little bit. Good presentation.
I have a couple of questions.
Questions?
I've got a couple. So what would, are there some low-hanging fruit projects do you see, one and two? Is there anything that, as I muddy the water, is there anything that my PRS two might benefit some of these projects?
In the, in the development world, it's a little difficult to say the low-hanging fruit ones, because we don't have any project we know specifically, here's the exact funding source, here's the partners, let's get it running. It'd be great if we did have some of those. We had some by just coincidence, like our Good Hope development, that, you know, the consultant recognized a need in that area, proposed what they thought would be ideal development to go in that area. And just by happenstance, we had already kind of been working in that direction anyway. So I think the Good Hope one would be an example of that.
But often, infrastructure has to precede some of these developments. Developers realize that once they decide they're going to develop the project, the city may not come through on the infrastructure. So, you know, when I see this, one of the things that was repeated was the need for additional parking on Spanish Street, you know, pushing into the hillside of the courthouse. This is the second time we've heard about that. We know that it's clearly inexpensive. Have we identified any funding mechanisms?
Well, I'm not sure if we know the.
I would think that would be low-hanging fruit.
Sure, sure. And parking was something that we heard a lot when we met with the public, whether it's perceived or a direct need. It's definitely the perception amongst many in the community. We don't know the exact cost of what that proposal is. I think if you saw my existing image, there's a lot of rock where they have that, so I'm not sure if, how far back into that hillside we would need to go. But yeah, we see that as, you know, addressing a lot of what we heard from people.
Can I add something? And this is not low-hanging fruit necessarily, but also when you look at the plan, there are 10 initial initiatives that they, that the consultants outlined, that they felt were kind of key initiatives that we should look at. Again, they're not necessarily low-hanging fruit, and some of them are kind of longer-term initiatives, but it's, it does outline some kind of key things that they think are important for us to try to accomplish and start working on, if that's helpful.
Gives good direction.
Right, right.
Others?
Yeah. Having to get that for Council, I'd appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I think one of the things, and they alluded to it, but I think one of the things, if you take a look back of when, of the last plan and the vision that you had, and I remember sitting here thinking, you know, boy, if, you know, 10% of that could ever happen, that'd be just a wonderful thing to happen in the next 10, 15 years. And I, I mean, probably 50% of it has happened. And, and so you, and so by just having ideas on, on paper and, and it just, developers look at it, they see it differently. And so a hotel that was thought about here becomes one somewhere else. An area to develop and redevelop over here, that idea spurns something else. And some of them were just exactly what, what was there. So I think the value of this type of planning cannot be underestimated. the things, if you take a look back of when, of the last plan and the vision that you had, and I remember sitting here thinking, you know, boy, if, you know, 10% of that could ever happen, that'd be just a wonderful thing to happen in the next 10, 15 years. And I, I mean, probably 50% of it has happened. And, and, and so you, and so by just having ideas on, on paper and, and it, it just, uh, developers look at it, they see it differently. And so a hotel that was thought about here becomes one somewhere else. Uh, a, an area to develop and redevelop over here, that idea spurns something else. And some of them were just exactly what, what was there. So I, I think, uh, the value of this type of planning cannot be underestimated and, um, and I think it's really exciting, really it's exciting that, that so much of it had developed that you need to have another plan. Although these plans happen and, and 20, 25 years later, they, well, we better have another plan, not much of it got done. So I, I think it's really exciting for our community to see, uh, the good work of planning and how planning comes to fruition.
Question. It's a, we have a dynamic, moving downtown area right now. And, um, with that momentum that we have going, some of these will be easier than some of the ones we started 10 years ago.
No question. Okay, thank you very much for, um, for the presentation, the work you've done on it over the last year, all the public input and everything. We appreciate your, uh, your work and your involvement. Uh, agenda review.
We have, uh, two public hearings tonight. Uh, first public hearing is, uh, rezoning of 1927 North Kings Highway. Uh, this is a, uh, residential manufactured home district and, uh, changing to a R4, uh, medium-density, uh, residential district. This is up at the Starview Mobile Home Park. I think, uh, initially, planning and zoning, um, had some neighbors that were concerned about some things and, and, uh, they asked the developer to go back and talk with the neighbors. That, that happened and, and in fact, I think, uh, the second time that they, they brought it up for the hearing and planning and zoning, there, there were no objections. So, uh, that's, uh, the first, uh, public hearing tonight and it is also on your agenda as number 17, um, to be considered for first reading. Uh, the second public hearing is one, uh, the changes are C1, uh, zoning designation to allow for car lots on, uh, as a special use. I know you had a discussion a few meetings ago regarding, uh, C1 area that wanted to, to do that in fact, and so this, um, allows that with a special use permit. So this, is that change? And that is number, uh, out of number, uh...
Eighteen, yes.
So that's, uh, the opportunity for tonight in the public hearings. In our consent agenda, we have, um, uh, water lines. This is for, uh, pressure, uh, reduction, uh, obligation regarding lines that need, uh, pressure reduced. We have the other side of that and we've always had the other side of that, but now then, some of our higher pressure and improvements to our system, we now have to deal with, uh, overpressure. So this, uh, takes care of that. Items five, six and seven are the second, third readings of the annexation of the Humane Society property and, uh, the zoning of that property as well as including it in the, uh, Ward number four. It is a concierge agreement with, uh, enterprise car rentals out at the airport. This is a great, um, addition to the airport and, uh, for vehicle rental services. Uh, number ti- number nine is the sequel service, uh, sequel server services. Uh, this allows us to, uh, do the work for the, um, electronic plan submission. If you recall during our last budget, that's one of the things that, uh, council was interested in us doing, for electronic plan submittal. And, uh, it takes a sequel service of its own to do so, so this is the rest of that, uh, in order to make that happen. Uh, number 10 is the, um, changing of our, our supplemental insurance, employee supplemental insurance. We've had employee supplemental insurance for some time. Uh, we had Aflac recently. Uh, we decided to send out and ask their others that were interested in providing that service. Uh, we've had, um, kind of some lacklusters, customer service with Aflac, so we thought it was a good time. Uh, Colonial came in and, uh, offered, uh, really good service, uh, and enacted some additional services and, uh, for, for a better price. And, uh, but our existing employees that have Aflac can keep it and continue service if they, they wish to. But this, this, uh, denotes Colonial Life and acts in insurance as the supplemental insurance for our plan. Uh, number 11 is the fourth, uh, amendment to our lease with the, uh, Cardinal of Lennon. Uh, they currently rent space from us and this, uh, continues that and, uh, makes a couple of changes to that. 12 and 13 are, uh, you already heard about tonight, are the dental and employee health insurance, uh, contracts for the next year. And, uh, then number 14 is to acknowledge receipt of an annexation petition from jury properties for property, uh, that this is on the, uh, other side of I-55, uh, on the, the west side of I-55. We already have, uh, property annexed on that side of 55 and this joins that. But sometimes, uh, that's noted. But, um, that is the consent agenda. Are there any items you'd like to remove from the consent agenda tonight? Not, we have, uh, four new ordinances. The first one is a, uh, permanent water line easement at Heritage Park Condominiums. This is up around Lexington. It's been in place for some time. Uh, we had a water leak. I think our folks went out and to fix it and found out that we didn't have the, uh, proper easements, so they asked them to sign those and they've done so. So this allows us to accept those. Um, number 16 is accepting the grant for air traffic control tower operating. Uh, this is a continued grant we've had for many years. So I think it's $162,000, uh, for that, uh, grant. Uh, and then numbers, uh, 17 or 18 are from the, the public hearings that we spoke about earlier. We have two appointments tonight. Mayor?
Golf course advisory board, that'll be a reappointment of Ken House. He was recently appointed and, uh, for a short term, and this is the reappointment. And planning and zoning, uh, a reappointment of Tom Welch. And ask for, he asked for, uh, consideration to be reappointed. And then the 2018 calendar, we need to take action on that, to approve that.
All those cal- all those are, uh, proposed in front of you, so get your calendars and make sure that, uh, those are all available.
I'm going to have to...
At least through April for some.
Yeah. Well, I gotta, I, I forgot about the change of weeks in January, so Mayor Proten's going to have to run the, uh, 8th of January meeting. Okay? And just a heads up, it's not till January.
One question.
Yes.
On 18, I know we're, uh, mending that code. I, not to put you on the spot, but how, we were going to get some of the developers together and kind of go through some of the overkill pieces of some of the code that was adopted. How far along or where are we at with that?
I think we had, uh, talked about doing that more in the winter time when they were a little less busy. But, um, that's on our agenda for this winter. Thanks for reminding us.
Counsel, any questions on the, uh, agenda? Uh, you noticed a memo for, uh, CVB for next time, and that would be a reappointment of Contella Noto. Okay. Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Counsel, any other, uh, action from our, um, study session from anyone? If not, we do need to have a closed session for legal action, litigation, confidential communication with our legal counsel, property transaction, transactions pursuant to the revised statute 610-021, items one and two. If I could have a motion moved again.
Second.
Hang on to my guard. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We'll stand adjourned and reconvene at 7:00 PM.